I'll call this regular council meeting of the village of Grand Manan to order this evening at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Dornum from the Sioux Cove Baptist Church.
It's a duty and a privilege to pray for our authorities. As the Bible tells us in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, we are urged to pray for them, and we thank you, Lord, for this privilege. Lord, we also thank you because you are our God, our Creator, and we thank you because this nation is created on Christian foundations, as our forefathers decided long ago to give you dominion from sea to sea. This is your world, and Grand Manan is your place as well. And we thank you, Lord. We thank you for everything. But today we come before you, Lord, to ask you also for wisdom, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to fill every person in this room with your wisdom, Lord, to make the best decisions. Lord, it's a time of distress for our world and for our provinces as well, and for this place too, Lord. It's a time, Lord, when we don't know what happens with the weather. We don't know what happens, Lord, with many other things, but we know that you, Lord, are in control, and you are the one who can change everything. And we pray, Lord, tonight, to give our beloved leaders wisdom to make the best decisions, to make the best decisions regarding the drought that we face, to make the best decision regarding social things and everything on this island. And we thank you, Lord. We thank you. We thank you because we know that you love us, and you will do more than we asked you. And we thank you in the name of the one who made everything possible, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I'm going to just have a couple of brief opening remarks this evening. First of all, it feels like a long time ago now, but a couple of weeks ago, the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure visited the island with the Deputy Minister and the ADM. We had the opportunity to sit down with them and talk about two big issues that are on our plates, one being the ferry system, the need for supplemental service, the need for replacement for the Grand Manan 5. We also talked about road resurfacing, which we understand is on the docket hopefully in the next couple of few years, but also the need to include in that a paved shoulder. So hopefully, we will see some progress on both of those files, but it was good to be able to welcome them to the islands so they could see firsthand some of the things that we talk about. The other thing is we'll be talking about a little bit more in depth later on in the agenda, but obviously, the current state of the weather, the fires across the province, I think, are on the top of everybody's mind. I know there was some discussion over the weekend in particular with the closing of the Crown Lands and people being asked to not go in the woods. So I would just say thank you to everybody who chose to respect that request. And I think it's also important to say a big thank you to our firefighters because they have had a couple of very close calls last week with a couple of incidents that could have been much worse had action not been taken as quickly as it had. So appreciate them and their efforts all the time, but particularly right now. So with that, we will move on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting, July 7.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to have some clarification, if I may. I'm a little confused. Under disclosure of conflict of interest, it says there was no disclosures of conflict of interest, but yet you declare, it says here very, also clearly in the minutes, that you declared conflict of interest on 19-1. So maybe we should have some, maybe it was just easier to have that under conflict of interest possibly, or?
Yeah, we could just add the fact that I declared conflict on 19-1. Was that the number?
Yeah, that was the number, yes.
Just because it was in the additions.
In the additions. Right, because I-
Oh, is that because of an addition?
It was an addition, and I declared after the addition.
Thank you. That makes sense to me. I wondered that as well, so thank you.
Okay.
Let's just add it here.
Right.
But I can move it.
Are you, are you okay with where it is, or do you think it should be moved out?
Just wanted some clarification, that's all.
Yep.
God forbid if anything goes, somebody brings it up sometime in the future. I wanted to be clear, that's all.
Yep, okay. Anything else on the minutes?
I will make a motion to set those.
You heard the motion from Counselor Told. Do we have a second, or?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I have one, but I'm going to call it a substitution because under closed session, the treasurer is homesick, and the financial statement, I'd like to suggest we defer that to the September meeting when she's here to help us with that. And so if in its place, we could add financial for snowplow.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a most to go with the recommendations as you read.
Okay, you heard the motion from Counselor Sturgis. Do we have a second, or?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question by CAO Rayner.
There's another addition, the universal truck and trailer for the transfer station garbage trailer. We need to add as well.
That's, that's, that's an estimate. So that's in closed session as well. Okay. So that would be financial transfer station trailer.
Madam Mayor, I'm willing to make a friendly amendment to that.
Okay. Are you all right with that as well?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So we have the two additions in closed session, financial snowplow and financial transfer station trailer. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. RCMP report. I see your green light flashing. It's-
It's right flashing. Madam Mayor and councils, thank you, and good evening. I had way down here in the bottom of my list to talk about the body worn cameras, so now that you brought it up, I'll go right to that point right now. We finally joined, I guess, the rest of the province and the rest of the country on our body worn camera initiative. I put just little cards on everybody's desk there prior to the evening, and you'll see on there just like a little QR code. I know it's not a fraud one, where you go and deposit money into my account, but it does give you to the, to a link there to the RCMP, where the RCMP has probably ever, only ever released its first public policy for the RCMP. The RCMP normally doesn't release any policies, but in the interest of transparency, the RCMP did release its policy in regards to the body worn cameras, how we use them, where we use them, and the privacies that are, exist with them, and how we use them, and how they're used for court. For here, if you see the flashing green, she's not recording. So if we're not getting an audio visual, if you see a flashing red, she's recording an audio, a video and audio. It does do a buffer 30 seconds, so we would see 30 seconds of video, but no audio once we activate the camera. So we go, and if we go into domestics or any type of scenes where we have to respond, everything is recorded so that there's full transparency, professionalism, and the courts can actually see how the police operate. It's like Copland Television, right? So we'll go on to that. So that's the, I said, that information is available to any of the public. If the public is interested in seeing it, we have the cards at the office as well, but that's that. I'll look at the last four months of files. We've had a little bit of an increase on the, on the files, April, May in 2024, with about 38. I was looking at these, I was very surprised that we had almost exact numbers, 38 files, 38 files for April, May 2024. April and May 2025, we had 70 files and 70 files. That's certainly a little bit of an increase. And in June and July 2024, 58 files, 57, and in green, increase here in June and July this year, 66 and 68 files. What really is the account for that? We might actually see perhaps an increase of the public reporting more to us, a little bit more on the proactive approach with the, with the RCMP, with our own internal initiatives. But we, and I'm also on top of it, making sure that when we do something, that our members are actually doing an internal reporting process. So lots of things we still continue to see. I know last week alone, I says, I worked a block of shifts and every day stopped somebody who didn't have insurance, didn't have license. That is still ongoing. It's quite an interesting thing to see, see here on a small island like this, every day. Other things that the province of New Brunswick has implemented is the immediate roadside suspension program to deal with drinking and driving. So now we can stop an individual, we do a roadside test with them. If they fail the roadside test, we can do an immediate roadside suspension, impound the vehicle, the documents are sent to the province, no court process. That's it. They lose, my understanding that they're, the penalty for the first offense, currently three-month suspension, 12-month mandatory ignition interlock program, impaired driving and reeducation course, and other fines and fees that associated with this. There's no criminal record, but I can't imagine what the insurance benefits will be at the end. Intimate partner violence continues to be an issue. We're probably getting once, once a week, once every two weeks, where we are having violence and relationships. It's, it's a very strong-minded mandate for the RCMP as a whole across the country to deal with this and combat this. And you will, there are some advertisements and some education processes that are out there to educate that this is not appropriate in any circumstance. And finally, I guess, well, two more things, I guess. There was earlier in the spring a fraud prevention seminar that Constable Alexander had hosted and brought in a member from our federal team in Fredericton. It was hosted by, there was a number of, a lot of seniors come in, and I think a lot of them had really gained the benefit from this. I'd like to see one again here, probably later in the fall or early in the spring again. But from that, we actually seen a reduction in fraud complaints to us from the senior community. So, which was, which was good to see in that way. So I'm kind of hoping that, I'm hoping that it's not necessarily that they're just not reporting to us, as opposed that they may be learning and gaining knowledge from this. And finally, I guess with drugs, it's always in everybody's mind, drugs in the community. We all know that we're, one's taken down, one comes up, that sort of thing. And one of my councils reminded me tonight that there, you know, there are other ways to report this stuff and not just to the RCMP. Some of the benefits that this province had brought in years ago, the programs such as the Safer Communities and Neighborhoods Program, the SCAN program. And I'm not aware of anybody in the community that it's actually reached out to SCAN. We can call SCAN and let SCAN know, but unless they hear from the community, they won't touch it. So, because I, well, I may be somebody's neighbor, but I'm a police officer, but you're, you're a neighbor, you're a neighbor, you're a neighbor. And SCAN wants to hear from those people who are being affected and what they see every day. I've got three brochures here for that. I'll leave it. One of the interesting things, things is that you want to take to, to mind on this. People tend, I don't want to get involved. I want the police to know that they're there. Yeah, that's fine. We, we know we're there, but nobody, nine times out of 10, the community doesn't want to get involved. One thing you'll read in this, get involved, the question is, will I have to give my name? It says, yes, you will have to identify yourself with SCAN when filing a complaint, but your name will never be released. So they use your information, they get your name, but if something is ever done that they take action, they'll never know where it come from. Okay? So I'll leave that behind there as well. So now, I kind of hope that I might see some people in the community might start to make some calls, because if they do, then they may reach out to us, or we may or may not know. I don't know. But either way, we're here to work with them.
Sounds good. Thank you. Questions or comments?
We did have some SCAN, like, five years ago, and then they stopped it for a while. But people, there were people using it back then, so some may not know that it's back there.
Lots, lots of times, they seem to gurgitate themselves after a period of time.
Maybe what I'll suggest is some of this information, it, once we get beyond the wildfire season, maybe we can share some of that on our Facebook page. I just worry that right now it will be lost in the other focus that everybody has right now. But maybe a distraction would be good, too. So, but maybe we share it now and share it in another little bit, but sometimes it does get to be information overload. So, did you, did I interrupt you?
Me?
Yeah. I thought you were leaning forward to say something. Sorry.
No, I was just listening, and I was glad to hear that program's ready.
I'll leave that here, and-
Perfect.
You can be the expert here in Roma.
Perfect.
Get involved.
All right. Anybody else? You got off, got off easy. I will say, it is good to see the increased number of files. I know we, a couple of years ago, we had a real push on to get people not to just complain about things on Facebook, but to actually make the calls. So it's good to see that that is still happening, and that those numbers are, not that we have this number of files, but at least that people are reporting things and that there, there is activity.
Sometimes things we can actually, sometimes we can't, but we, we don't know about it. We don't know what.
Exactly. So, thank you very much. Appreciate being here. Okay. Under old business, so at the beginning of last month, I had someone reach out to me that was very interested in the pool and maybe starting to do some fundraising and wondering where we were with that. And I explained where we were financially, why it had kind of fallen to the wayside. And so they said they would think about it, but they might be interested in starting doing some fundraising. And then, I think, a couple of weeks after that, there was a flurry of activity on social media, we'll call it, with other people who were also maybe not looking to step in to help, but were very curious about where things were. So we had a conversation about that. But from that, there have been other people who've reached out and said, you know, if there is fundraising, I'd be interested in helping, what is going on with that. And so I don't think, moving ahead with the pool, I don't think is on our radar for the next couple of years easily. But if there was going to be a community fundraising effort, it's going to take a couple of years to raise any amount of money anyway. So I'm just wondering, is this something we are interested in talking about in a few years, potentially, recognizing that in a few years, it probably may not be many of us sitting around this table? Or maybe we'll all be back here in two years, we don't know. But I wonder if it's worth, I, my idea was, if there is interest around the table, reaching out to the people who are interested in actually doing fundraising, not just talking about why we don't have it, but willing to put boots on the road and actually go to work and start doing some of those initiatives. So I'm just wondering, I guess, where, what everybody's thinking. I know it was a priority for a lot of people four years ago, and we talk about it every budget year, but I don't, I don't know where we are, so I'm looking for a little bit of direction before we encourage people to start fundraising, or just say this isn't something we're going to be able to look at for at least three years. Maybe we should look at it then. So I'm not sure I've articulated that well, but that's kind of where I am right now. Like, as people are talking about it, do we want, do we want to build on that momentum, or do we want to just see where things happen after the next little bit? Counselor Green?
Yeah, as you articulated in your Facebook posts a couple of weeks ago, there were a lot of big ticket items coming at us. And with the pool, it's not only the capital cost of building it, it's the operating cost year after year. And before anyone could start fundraising, we'd have to make a commitment that it is a go. I mean, they don't want to raise money and just, it just sit there and have to give it back or something after some period of time. So we'd have to really do some homework and try to get some realistic projections on capital and operating costs, and see if, with the other costs that we cannot, just going to point to our core, like, the price that the RCMP are, what, $750, almost $800,000 a year now, which is only one item, but the roads, the other issues that you articulated, that I think we've got to get a good grip on that before we make a commitment to move on another project.
Anyone else? Counselor Turner?
I don't think it would hurt for us to at least look at the numbers that we had a few years ago and see, like, what scale that was, and if it was what we would envision now. And maybe that would give us something to sort of aim towards at least, and discuss about, are we prepared to do this? But I think if we had the numbers in front of us and sort of the general plan of what we were considering at the time, then we could make a more informed decision.
Yes.
So in 2023, we hired Place, Train and Design to do kind of a Phase 1, Phase 2 of the Victoria Park, which Phase 1 was the splash pad, and Phase 2 was the pool. And Phase 2 back in 2023 was 1.2 million for the pool itself.
2023? So it's only two years old? It's better than I thought. But it's still, I mean, you got to expect it's probably up to 1.3, 1.4. Yeah. So what if we, I mean, we're starting to inch into budget season here in the next month or so. What if at one of our early budget meetings, that is on the agenda, is let's look at the overall cost, what the operating costs were the last year we, we ran the pool, like, what, recognizing that was like five or six years ago, so those numbers are going to be higher, but it would at least give us some touch point of what it might be looking at and see where we think we might be. Is that reasonable? And then, and then we can move on, and if there is still, if there is interest at that point, then we can reach out to the people who are interested and say, this is what, this is what the cost would be to look at. Is that fair? Yes.
We really need the federal government to come on board with their funding programs. I mean, currently, there's nothing listed. I mean, typically, what happens in the, with the bilateral agreement between the feds and the province is the feds will do 33%, the province will do 33, and the municipality will do 33. Currently, right now, there's nothing available. So the most we could hope for would be 40% from the province through RDC, so the municipality would be responsible for 60%. It really makes it a lot more palatable if we can get 66% funded from the feds and the province.
So are we okay with that going forward? Okay. Okay, item number 12 is petitions and/or written submissions to be read. That's Leonard Drive. Let me find, see how good my filing system actually is on here. If you guys don't, got it. So this is from Midge Doucette. Hi, Leonard Drive is a dirt road off Hill Road. As far as we know, it's a private road maintained by the people living there. We've been talking with some of the road guys and look into other similar roads, and we're informed that the road could be fixed and maintained by the village with some conditions. If this is something that could happen, what needs to be done? We're only about six residences on the road, and I think some of the property are rented. We're almost at the end of 29 Leonard Drive ourselves. We would appreciate any directions on getting the ball rolling and having a better road. You can reach us anytime by email or cell at. So I think there are standards that DTI has to upgrade a road. Is that correct?
There used to be. I'm not sure if that same program still exists today or not, but before it was, the property owners would bring the road up to provincial standards with the 66 feet, you know, and turn it over, and then the province would maintain it.
Counselor Green?
Yeah, in our subdivision bylaw, it stipulates some of the conditions that the road has to be built to the, the standard of the road that it's being serviced from. So it'd be like a chip seal road, you know, same width, it would have a 66-foot right away, but the top wouldn't have to be wider than the Hill Road. And yeah, that, and once it's brought up to a standard that the DOTI accepts, or we accept, I guess, too now, then it could be added to a municipal street list. But as far as ditching in culverts and stuff, that, the specs for that would, aren't, aren't in the subdivision bylaw, but I'm sure they're around somewhere, DOTI or wherever.
So I guess at this point, we can provide the information on that and see if there is willingness from the property owners on the, yeah. Okay. Does Alex still want to wait till the end, or do we, should we move him up to the beginning of new business? Alex, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Well, I know we specifically put you on the end for 14-8, but we could move you up with the will of the group to 14-1, so you don't have to sit through the other seven items that are ahead of you on the agenda, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, that's great.
All right. So if it's okay with the group, let's move on to 14-8, which is building permits, and that's Counselor Green.
Didn't you? I turned my hearing aids up and everything, anyway. Been hearing some horror, well, horror stories, some less than favorable stories about people waiting quite a long time to get building permits approved. And, you know, we keep saying that housing is a priority, we want people building. I'm not sure, Alex, maybe you can answer that, or what is an average delay from someone submitting an application and getting a building permit?
Sure, yeah. No, I can answer that. So, I mean, to basically summarize, our goal is to get people permits within two weeks if we have a complete application. So what we consider a complete application means you have a site plan, you have a description of the project. And if it's a building with, it's more complicated, like a commercial structure or multifamily dwelling, then you have certain plans that may be designed by an architect. But you don't need an architect for a house. A simple house just requires good scale drawings. In the last council report there, I noted that we did, we got a template for how to do a scale drawing that somebody, you know, an individual could do, where they designed the rooms and showed us where those, the structure are going to be in the house. So not everybody necessarily has that skill, so contractors often need help. But what we find the biggest delay is if people submit an application and say they're missing a- they're missing a construction plan, or they're missing their septic approval, or there's a question sent back from staff and there's no response. We basically put, if we don't have that information, we prioritize the people who have complete applications and get those done first while we wait for that information. The other piece would be making sure if we send an invoice for the permit fee, pay it as soon as possible, because we will only work, start our work once the permit fee is paid. So a lot of folks, they might submit an application, you know, they got the invoice, you know, getting around to pay it. But that's all the time essentially lost for the person who's applied, because it's not a complete application until we have all the documents and we have the permit fee paid. And some of this is not necessarily our choice. This is a, a lot of this stuff's now prescribed in provincial statute in the Building Code Administration Act. We need this stuff before we actually issue a permit, because we actually have to confirm that whatever's going to be built is going to meet the National Building Code of Canada. So the plans have to show a structure that meets the National Building Code of Canada. So sometimes that's a little bit of back and forth to make sure we have all those right pieces. But when we do have an application that has all right pieces, again, our goal's 10 business days, two weeks. And that's, that's pretty competitive with a lot of planning jurisdictions across Canada. You know, they can range quite a bit depending if you're in a larger city, Halifax or Ottawa, it can be a couple of months on average to get a residential permit. So we have the same building code, National Building Code of Canada enforced, and that's our job. But we try to do it as quick as possible. The other thing I would suggest for people who are trying to get this done as quick as possible is to set up a pre-permit appointment with Sherman Ross, who's the building inspector who works exclusively on Grand Manam Island and is available for in-person consultations prior to applications. In fact, he can help assist people with filling out the forms so they have all the pieces together before they start. But yeah, that's, that's the long and short of it. But if there's specific concerns or questions, I'm happy to maybe dive deeper.
But if the plan has to show that the house or the building being built meets the National Building Code of Canada, it would have, sounds to me like that would be a drawing beyond the scope of most average consumers. Is that right?
It depends. And like I said, if you're doing the small home, where you can, you know, show that you can meet energy code requirements under the 2020 code, just by the virtue of having a small house, then you don't need to have any special knowledge about energy modeling or anything crazy like that. It's just, you build a small house, and you have enough insulation, and you tell us what kind of insulation you're doing, then that would be sufficient. But we need scale drawings as opposed to sort of like a sketch on a napkin with a square, because we need to say, you know, what we're okaying, what we're actually permitting is what they build. And, you know, in the past, I think Grand Manam, there was a system of, the code was applicable, but it was on the individual person to follow code. And it wasn't necessarily that plans review stage. And the plans review stage is something we do do, but is required. And we make sure that your plans do meet code before the permit's issued.
And you mentioned the efficiency thing. Is that, that something new, that houses have to basically get an Energy Star rating?
Not Energy Star. It's the National Energy Code, which is something which has been adopted into the Building Code Administration Act of the province of New Brunswick. So it's applicable for residential and commercial. The residential criteria is quite simple, again, when you have a small structure. When I mean small structure, I mean a house less than 600 square meters, which is under 6,000 square feet. So most, most dwellings are going to be small structures.
Okay. Now, I'd say after hearing these, these people, I was just wondering if there was, I didn't realize that Sherman was available to help people with that. I was going to suggest that we needed something like that to help people, because it's not the same consumer coming back again and again and again. Most of us get one building code and it might, our building permit might be 20 years before we do another one. And things have changed.
Well, yeah, no, it's exactly, you know, Grand Manam's unique, obviously, in the whole province. You guys are, you know, an hour and a half from the mainland, and we're kind of, we're, but we provide a hybrid service. We're there in person in Sherman, and he's available to have in-person meetings at the village office on request. So anytime somebody wants to, you know, see somebody in the flesh and, and, you know, lay out a set of plans, Sherman's the building inspector who we're training up. And eventually, even more and more inspections will be done exclusively by, by the inspector located on the island because we're working through this person's certification process currently. So, yeah, the goal is to have more and more inspection done on the island by an islander and to have some of the permitting and zoning information collected and make sure we can do that through the planners working here. But, but then that's sort of in-person role, or our goal is to keep it moving so it's more and more on the island. And, but yeah, it's, it's the same code across the whole country that people are applying. There'll be supplementals to the building code in Ontario or Alberta, but we're largely working with the same code across the whole, whole of the country. And we're actually doing pretty good on our permit turnaround, even though it might seem like you'll hear concerns and such. I would say if you hear major concerns, like this seems like a ridiculous requirement, the building inspector's asking me to provide, and you're worried that it might not be true, two things. You can ask the building inspector always to give you the code reference so you can look it up yourself. The code is available online, publicly, free and available. Any person can look it up, look up those references. And if they're wrong, there's, there's a couple of ways to even essentially challenge that, because we're not perfect. We're humans and we make mistakes. So you can go through the building code administrator of the province. If there's an issue with, if there's a concern that one of our building inspectors has made a mistake, we're happy to take that review and make sure we're doing the best job we can. And two, if it's a matter of just our customer service or something that's not quite right, like we're, you know, not responding in the best possible way, I, I actually call me directly. So I'm the planning director. I'm responsible for both planners, the development officers, the building inspectors, so I oversee the whole process. And I know Bonnie and Chris have called me to ask for some, you know, answer for certain things that they thought could have been improved or better. And I will, I'll answer those things and work to improve those things.
Okay. I guess that, can we, through our Facebook or website, be telling people that building, maybe we really look at getting a building permit application? If you need help with this form, there is help, local help available. Let people know that so that they don't waste their time and the RSC's time with an incomplete or missing information on a form. Thank you, Alex.
I definitely think that's definitely doable. Anybody else have a question for Alex while we've brought him here this evening, virtually? Counselor Sturgeon, you've got your finger on the microphone.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to give kudos to Sherman, because he has been very helpful. I know several instances of people helping him work through the, the paper world. And so anyway, I know that he does do that, and he does a good job at that. It's always very helpful. However, I do have, as of April, up until April 1st of this year, you wanted to replace a window, as long as it was the same size, you didn't need a building permit, but now you do. And so, anyway, there's reasons for that, I guess. I think it's kind of, I kind of wonder why, windows got to be put in 2025 standards when the place was built in 1914, and now it affects the rest of it. That's for another argument for another day. But I am kind of wondering, like a building permit, as you've alluded to, you need to have everything to scale and such. So if you just want to put a simple window in, what does it matter whether there's a brook within 100 feet of it, or, or where all the other buildings are located in relation to the property and such? That's a, it seems like there'd be a lot of paperwork and a lot of bother for such a simple task, I guess. That's what I'm getting at, Alex.
Yeah. If you're just doing a general reno and it's, you're just swapping out the windows, the only thing that you need written to show that the, you know, one, is it, is it a bedroom window? So is it, have egress? And then two, what is the, the height of the window in relation to the inside wall and the outside? Because what we have now, and the reason why we're asking for permits for these window replacements is because in the 2020 National Building Code now, there's a requirement for window control opening devices, so that essentially children don't fall out of windows. And there's been some, there's been some fatalities where children get out of the windows, they climb out of a window and they, they fall. And so if it's over a certain height, then the requirement kicks in. And that's on the interior building and the exterior. So that's, that's something which we are asking people to check. But yeah, even if, if it's just purely interior work only, what I would do is put in your description that it's simply interior work only. For the site plan, you can, if it's asking you for a site plan, it would be something which you would say not required. You could upload a picture of a document saying not required, interior only. Typically, we're trying to make sure the form doesn't ask you for that kind of information if it's not going to be strictly required. But that would be my advice for the time being. I'll take a look at that with the form and make sure it's not asking for site plans where it's not needed.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. I think, are we all set? Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Okay. Back to 14-1, Planning Advisory Committee. appoint a member. C.A. Reiner to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back at our regular council meeting in July, we had a motion to contact the first choice to see if they were still interested in being a member of the PAC, and if they were no longer interested, to contact the second choice as discussed. So we did reach out to the first choice, who was Andrew Jones. He graciously accepted. So we need to formally add Andrew Jones to our PAC for the duration of Tam Greenlee's time, which expires on December 31, 2025. But before we get to the motion, I think it goes without speaking that we need to thank Tam for all her years of service and dedication to our PAC. She was a valued member of that committee, great input, and she will be dearly missed. And we thank her for that.
So I guess what I'm doing is making a motion that we put Andrew Jones on our PAC as a member till the end of December of 2025.
You heard the motion from Counselor Told. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Green Law. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I would also like for us to write a letter of appreciation to Tam for her service and part.
Agreed. Sounds good. Okay. All set on that one? Move on to 14-2, which is Charlotte County Seniors Resource Center. Vulnerable persons list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As most people know, we have identified our vulnerable people as a key to emergency situations and making sure that we are able to connect with everyone that needs assistance. So we have teamed up with the Charlotte County Seniors Resource Center. They have hired a local individual, Sharon Kosaboom, to be that, that boots on the ground here on Grand Manam. Sharon's got quite a, quite a rapport with them. I mean, they've been doing the Meals on Wheels again, and she's really been able to reach out to that, that sector. We received a grant through the regional resiliency to perform that, but Sharon is asking for our help, for the community's help in helping to identify these vulnerable people. We have the forms here at the village office for anyone that wants to stop in to fill it out. It's completely confidential. It'll only be used in times of emergencies. So I think they also have some forms up at the, at the pharmacy. And, I mean, most of the vulnerable people that we're identifying, for us to post on our Facebook page, that's not who we're targeting. So it's going to be word of mouth, and people who know, neighbors that know people that are vulnerable, to help get the word out, to help to identify these people and create that list. So in times of need, we'll be able to go door to door and do the wellness checks. So it's basically more information than anything. So if anyone has any information on anyone that they feel should be on that list, please reach out to the village office or to Sharon and come in and fill out one of those forms so we can add them to the list.
So just a little thing to add on there. If they do pick it up at the pharmacy, the form, they need to return it here. So that's all.
Your bill?
Yeah, yeah.
And just for anybody who's watching, this came up after the storms a couple winters ago on the mainland when the power was out for a week. And it really, as they were doing checks on the mainland, it sort of triggered for us, like, there are people on Grand Manam that while most of us would have family that you may be able to go to, some people don't have that, and to make sure that we have, that we are checking in on those people. So it may not be that they're necessarily infirm is the word that I think of, which is probably not the best word, but just people who maybe need that little extra check during those times. So. All right. 14-3 is UMB Resolution, and this is actually Counselor Boyd's item that we talked about back in July. This is for the UMB Annual Meeting that is coming up in October. It's about expanding eligibility under the New Brunswick Small Business Investor Tax Credit to potentially increase the supply of affordable housing. So basically, we need to make a motion, we need to make this motion to take to UMB to be made there to look for support. There was support for it in principle back in July, and I hope you all remember the conversation, because that's about the sum total of my knowledge on this one. So if there's any really tricky questions, I'm hoping there won't be. So.
Madam Mayor, do you need the whole thing read?
I think so.
Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, I'll move the subject, expanding of eligibility under the NBE Small Business Investor Tax Credit to increase the supply of affordable housing. Whereas the provincial government has set a goal to work with communities and support the construction of 30,000 new homes by 2030, and whereas New Brunswick has a growing shortage of affordable housing options, especially for people with low and moderate incomes, and whereas the cost of building new housing has grown significantly since 2020, and more housing supplies needed in the communities, large and small, and whereas the New Brunswick Small Business Investors Tax Credit Program provides a tax credit for New Brunswick corporate and trust investors who invest in eligible small businesses in the province, and whereas the development of affordable housing does not currently meet the criteria to qualify for the New Brunswick Small Business Investor Tax Credit, and whereas expanding the tax credit for small business investment to include the development of affordable housing could help increase the supply of local housing by providing a financial benefit to investors in New Brunswick. Therefore, we resolve that the Union Municipalities of New Brunswick advocate to the government of New Brunswick to expand the eligibility criteria of the New Brunswick Small Business Investor Tax Credit to include small businesses involved in the creation of affordable housing.
Seconded by Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second?
Seconded by Counselor
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-4 is EpiPen's program continuation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So four or five years ago, we started the EpiPen program, which we placed both an adult and a junior EpiPen in five kind of strategic locations around the island. It was the Anchorage Provincial Park, both ferries. At the time, the outdoor farmer's market was in North Head. So we had one at the Business Center and as well as here at the Community Center. When the program first started, we got some funding from the government, which of course only lasted for one year. So since then, we've been funding this ourselves. Last year was the first year that we didn't supply the new pens. And since then, they are, because depending on when you get the pens, they can last from 12 months to 18 months. So at this point, most of the pens are expired. We had a call a couple weeks ago from the Anchorage, I think, that they noticed that their pens were expired and wanted to know if we were going to be replacing them. So before we did, I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention that we haven't renewed them since last year and just double-check if people, if this feel that this is something that we should continue to do. It's roughly about $1,000 for the five pens. So I guess if this is, council's wishes to continue the program, I can get those pens ordered from the pharmacy and get them back in their locations.
Is that, so were you talking 10 pens? So it'd be 2,000 then?
No, it's $1,000 total for the 10 pens.
Okay.
Five adult, five junior.
So I saw nodding when the CEO was talking. So is that any questions or comments? Are we okay with proceeding or?
Madam Mayor, for the sake of the record, so I'll make a motion that we give the CEO permission to add the pens.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Told. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Back over to you.
I should add, before we go to the next thing, if Counselor Ballantyne is here, she'd probably correct me. But when that program first come out, the Rotary Club also helped sponsor that program. So I just want to recognize that.
Okay, 14-5 is the CCBF 2024 to 2028 Council Resolution.
So the CCBF, which used to be the old Community Infair, the Gas Tax Fund, we've talked about this quite a few times, and we've gone around and around and around. It never really made any type of progress with it. So staff in the last couple of weeks really dug their heels in and said, we need to get this done. The province has been waiting for it. We've got payments that are waiting to be made for 2024. And here we are midway through 2025, so we need to make sure this is done. So what we did was we identified three projects. After long discussions with our accountants, with kind of our financial outlook, we felt that the three projects should be the new fire truck, a new garbage trailer for the transfer station, as well as, what's the fourth one? The expansion to the airport. So unless anyone feels there's other projects that should be added, if we can go with these projects for now, we would need the resolution to accept those projects for the 2024, 2028 CCBF and get that sent off to the province so we can start receiving our regular payments.
And if we accept those three projects, we can add additional ones down the road if there's something comes up that we want to reallocate or add?
As Luke Terrio, who is the provincial coordinator, would say, no, 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 no.
But then, yes.
But yes.
Yes. So questions or comments on the CCBF? I'm going to get those letters in the wrong order sometime. It's going to come out really bad. We do, and there's, I think there's a resolution in the package.
So the resolution basically needs to say that the document entitled "The Village of Graham and Ann: Five-Year Capital Investment Plan for the Canadian Community Building Fund", CCBF 2024, 2028, be adopted.
Go move.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon? And seconded by Counselor Told. Question?
Care to improve on perfection?
All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-6 is fire ban bylaw. You're up first.
It's still, it's still me?
It's still you.
This is more for discussion than an actual bylaw. We've had some of the executive at the Fire Hall raise concern with the lack of ability to stop someone from having an open fire or fireworks or... So there's got to be something that we can do on a municipal level to help with that. And I know, doing some research, it looks like, I mean, it's hard to tell people what... We can't close the woods, but we can certainly prevent open fires and fireworks, sparklers, those kind of things, to help mitigate the risk of the situation that we find ourselves in right now. So I know Deputy Chief Burgess is here tonight and available to answer some questions, or maybe he wants to give his input on this. But we're, as much as you hear on the radio, in the news, in the Facebook about the severity of the situation, the fire ban, there's still people having fireworks. There's still people having open fires. And it's serious, and we need to be able to take more control. And none of this means anything if we don't have a way to enforce it. So we can do all of the bylaws that we want, all the policies, but unless we have enforcement, they're not worth the paper they're written on. So I'll leave it at that, open for discussion. I mean, Dave is here. If he wants to add anything to that, or if anyone has any questions, I will open the floor.
Questions or comments? I, Counsel, yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm just curious as to whether or not the RCMP can volunteer to enforce this.
So... So I had a conversation informally, like, just about where we are, where we were last week. And they were not able to. But in reading the Emergency Measures Act, if we declare a state of local emergency under Section 17 of that act, J Division is, will enforce what is in the state of local emergency. It's, I mean, that's a big step. It's a huge step to take. And I don't, that's why I sent it out yesterday, this morning. But I am, I mean, over the last few days in talking to people in the fire department, I mean, the stress that they, I can't imagine the stress that they're feeling. And after the two calls last week, I am, I mean, I am worried. I worry a lot about, I mean, we've talked about this before when we talk about emergency planning, what happens if we were to have a fire? And with the state of the province's resources right now, it was always going to be difficult for us to get help. But it's a lot harder where we are right now because there just are no resources anywhere else in the province. And so, I mean, I keep going back to, as a municipality, we have a responsibility for the safety and well-being of our community. And are we doing what we need to do? Are we doing everything we can do to make sure we're doing that? And that's sort of where I landed yesterday when I was reading the Emergency Measures Act and sort of, and put this draft together. I don't know if it's the right thing. I'm looking, I'm wondering what everybody else is thinking. But that's kind of where I've, where I landed personally. And I'm not supposed to enter in debate, so I've already, I'll be quiet now and look for other people to talk. Counselor Green, you're leaning forward?
Yes. The meeting Saturday, I didn't get the email till late and missed it. I would have liked to have been there. But my understanding is that that, you asked about having help with enforcement, and the answer was...
We'd have to look into it. And that's pretty much where it was left. And so I think that was the other thing that sort of triggered this, is if something's going to happen, we're going to have to force something to happen. And this doesn't guarantee that it would be enforced, but it would require an explanation of why they're not going to. Because if it says in the act that they will enforce it, then I think there has to be a reason why they won't. It's sort of where I stand on it. It's like, if nothing else, we'll get an answer about whether they will or they won't enforce it.
I think we, to have an email, I was going to say letter, but email's how we deal with things, to J Division saying, if we take this step, are you going to comply with it? Would be a good, good thing to know moving forward. If they say, yeah, you can read it that way, but we don't read it that way, and we don't do that, then, you know, we'd have to be thinking of it something different, I believe, than to count on them to be available. DNR, when we had a DNR person on the island, wouldn't that be nice, again, to protect some wildlife and stuff? They would do, that would be part of their job on a normal day.
I wonder if it would be worth putting a question to DNR. I know they're, they're probably run thin right now with everything that's going on. But to have an officer come over for a day or two overnight and do some rounds, go to the campground, go to the beaches. We heard rumors of one of the campgrounds in the Trailer Park having fireworks Saturday night. So, I mean, they're able to write the tickets. And if, once the word gets out that it's being watched and people are getting ticketed or fined for it, it might help to curb it a little bit. But my understanding was there was a call for the fire department to distinguish a bonfire over the weekend. A call came in from the RCMP. When the fire department got there, the RCMP was nowhere to be found. So it'd be nice to have the RCMP stay on scene to, to help while the fire department extinguished the fire, instead of the fire department rolling in in an escalated situation where people don't want their fire extinguished.
Other thoughts around the table? That is literally a cut and paste from the province's wording. And if, we don't have to. That was just where I, where I pulled the wording from. I'm, I'm very much on the, I don't think the issue is necessarily with hiking until somebody throws a cigarette. Fire, or whatever. It's, that, that's the challenge that I think it is, is that how do you distinguish between people who have common sense and they don't? And I should probably have gotten you to share this because apparently I'm way more invested in this than I feel like I am. I don't disagree with writing to J Division, but I think the length of time it would take to get a response back, it's going to be too late. Yeah.
Is there generally, I mean, normally, is there much communication between the fire department and RCMP? Like, do you guys talk?
Some of them do talk, what's involved, yeah. But not a lot. Some of them do. I talked to Mark there tonight. He said if he knew what the fawns were, it would be easier what the fawns got to be. Like, he said, like, we can go refund, but we don't know what the fawns is supposed to be, how much it's supposed to be, right? That's what he guys said in place, and what, what fawn is going to be, right?
But the RCMP knew enough to call for help to put out a bonfire, so they're taking some awareness of what's going on. Some of the wording, like, I really don't know how we, it's all interpreted, like, use of vehicles in the woods, not permitted. Like, does that mean Dave can't go home? No, or, oh, you know, this crab road, Dark Harbor, you know?
And that's what I, I mean...
Yeah.
We can word it however we want. Like I said, cut and paste from literally what the province put out on Saturday. So, and I agree, it's not that clear. And maybe it needs to say off driveways, like, you use a road and a driveway, but once you get beyond that, then you're, I don't know.
Or you could limit it to recreational vehicles?
Vehicles, yeah.
Madam Mayor, as president of the Wildlife Association, I got an email from the province today, notice, just as general, overall notice that all firing ranges that are located on crown lands is, they're closed until further notice. And all those that are not, like ours, are asked to not operate. The question, heavy word is "ask". And it's the same, it's, a lot of the things that the province is doing is, crown land, no, no, no. But if it's private land, we strongly advise, ask, that you do the same. And we're kind of caught in that situation really here because we have little to know crown land. And I hate to put it this way, but I find when you tell people that they can't do something, they make it a point to do it, unfortunately.
But there also are the same people who are not, it doesn't matter how much you encourage them, they're also not, not doing that either. So I'm, I'm hearing some hesitation about this, which is fair. So... Do we want to table this, put it aside, Counselor Told?
I don't think it matters what you're going to do, they're going to do, right? You can have a law, you can have a rule, you can have a fine, you can do whatever you want. You can just put out there that you want people to think level-headedly and think... This is the first time in the 33, 34 years I've lived here I've had no grass. So this, to me, is exceptional. But I don't know if everybody understands how exceptional it is. So I think all we can do is do our best to put out there the information and to try and get people to realize that if they're the, how are they going to feel if they're the reason there's no woods left? How are they going to feel if it's because they mowed their lawn and the spark went off a rock and started a grass fire? Because they couldn't wait another two weeks till rain? So I don't think it really matters how you put it out there or what you put out there. People will be who they are. And they'll either take it to heart and say, okay, I'm going to do my best not to do this, and, or they're going to say, I don't care. So that's just my thoughts on it.
I don't think it's a bad idea, like, our CAO talked about getting in contact with natural resources there and asking them to come over for a day or two or something, just to, might make people think a little more about it.
Deputize someone, you know? If we had someone that could, like, if the village said, yes, we're at this point, they could say, okay, this person can enforce this. Or maybe we could have an officer that would be available, you know? And we could say, yep, it's time for the emergency officer to step in. But I don't think it would hurt to have a backup plan like that because we don't know either what could happen, like, that the RCMP may not be available. I think there's two on duty at most. So if you ended up with a couple of fires or something going on as a result of a fire, you know, then it could easily be sidelined too. I think, sort of like DNR gives vet fleet the permission to put down the animals, and if you could have someone that can step in in emergencies, maybe, in the future.
You can't shoot a gun!
You can't shoot a gun. They can take them on private land.
So, what I'm hearing is we're gonna reach out to DNR. I will follow up again with J Division to see about enforcement if we were to do something. We have a series, or have a few more Facebook posts to try to encourage people to provide some of the information about how, how bad it actually is. So, beyond that, are we satisfied with what we're doing as far as the fire ban right now?
There was a suggestion on Facebook about getting postal to make an announcement, in theory.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I thought it was, because people are coming from all over, and you do expect people to know at this point, but...
It could be a fairly strong one, something of an buoyant as well.
For the lot of visitors...
No, but I'm just saying that it reinforces that message.
The buoyant that went out last week got people's attention, so maybe a secondary one, like a week later reminder about it is a bad idea.
Yes, Madam Mayor, because a lot of people don't actually realize how much drought it is over here compared to the mainland, because the mainland, they get more rain and everything than we do, right? So, if the burn ban's off over on the mainland, right? They're coming over here, "Well, we're gonna have a fire, we're burning, burning, and going on." And that's, they were one of the concerns, right? Like, to, like, I was talking to one of the RCMP officers. He said, "The municipality could do some kind of the bylaw to override this." Like, say, if municipality thinks to draw it, they can stop the burn, or they can put on a turn, right? But then, like, they could have somebody to enforce that.
And catching everybody coming up, very, we had a, I'm not promoting Paul's business, but we had a sign there, or maybe we get one from DNR, where they move the needle from green to yellow to red, or something like that.
Yeah.
Between the, in there, so that that's the first thing they see. Then, there's not much excuse then for not seeing it.
And then, there were a couple times up there at the campground, I talked to Drew down, somebody got started firing. I said, "Please don't set the fire, because it was a burn ban." Well, they get fired, y'all, over there, but it's propane fire. So, everybody's saying, "Well, if you have a propane fire, I can have a..."
That was something that confused me, that the province had allowed, was they, they actually said on the page that propane fire fits were allowed.
Yeah.
It's confusing to people.
Well, yeah.
There's no action. Yes.
Right? Because everybody's in the campground, and they're seeing a fire, and they're probably saying, "Well, there doesn't say anything is a regular fire, because, say, for instance, if somebody goes and drops a sweater, or be prepared with a fire." What are we gonna do? What are we gonna throw?
Okay.
Another suggestion was our sign.
Just cover everything in posters.
So, the staff of the VIC is now telling people that it's strongly recommended, no hiking on any trails. We, I guess we had an email last night from Kay Small, and she followed up with a phone call this morning, just letting us know that they, she is closing the red trail from Swallow Tail to Whale Cove, and she's not allowing any traffic up into, to the pit. But it's frustrating, because everyone's calling the village office, saying, "Well, what are you doing? What are you doing for the forest lives, to help prepare?" We're doing everything that we can do to help prepare worst-case scenario. We're working on our, our EMO plan, our evacuation plan, you know, shelter possibilities, everything that we can to help prepare. But this isn't just our problem. This, the community needs to get on board, to help us. We can't do everything. We can prepare, but we need help in trying to be proactive on this.
Anyone else?
I had somebody message me when I was sitting there, "Well, when she has a camp, her village, she wants to know, are we allowed to go and check on her camp?" That's what I got. I never answered it, because I wanted to bring it across to you first, to see what your thoughts are on it, right? Because I don't want to tell them one thing and you tell them something else, right?
I think the messaging from the province and the messaging from us has to be, people are strongly encouraged to not go in the woods.
That's what I was gonna tell them, but I just wanted to...
We can't say no at this point.
He's encouraged him not to.
Because it doesn't matter what you're doing, any, any activity increases the risk, whether you need to or not.
But there's like, like me, like, I'm not that far in the woods, but I, but when I go home, we're inside, that's it. I don't do anything around here, right? Because all it's gonna do is one of those farts, is all it's gonna do.
Hot, hot enough for on some dry grass, yeah?
Right? Like, it's unbelievable, like, going out to a rocky place, it ain't us, it's powder. Ground is that dry and powder. Ducks can go up there digging day to day, and they're digging up some on top, so it's powder. Like, a lot of people don't, don't realize on how dry it really is.
So, the groundwater in that pit...
Is gone.
Is gone. It is powder, right down where the, the ducks were sitting three weeks ago.
Well, I've been kayaking a little bit down at the ponds at the Yankers. Last pond down, when I was camping here last month, the first of last month, I was putting my head on the water, tree, tree, happy to water. There last weekend, I had the girls down on the pond, there's water, bottom or not. So...
The average rainfall for July on Graham and Inn is around 86, 87 millimeters. We had 10 this year. All right, moving on. 14-7 is National Acadian Day request, and I thought this was you.
Me? Okay. We had a community member come in, and she was wondering if the village would be willing to fly the National Acadian Day flag. She said that it's important to her, and she would like to see it flown on August 15th, which is National Acadian Day, and would like us to make a motion that we would do that, if we're in paper.
Thoughts or comments? Councilor Sturgeon?
I'm all for celebrating culture and beliefs and such, anything. I strongly encourage that. But on the other hand, in my opinion, we really have no Acadian culture here, and we, you know, we were settled by loyalists, and, you know, so, that's where, that's where I'm at. It's not that I'm against anybody by any stretch of the imagination, but that's the reality, in my opinion.
We've had some requests before for the flags. We've always stuck with the three that we have.
That was going to be my suggestion, but I think in the past, we've maybe put something up on our sign in recognition of whatever the day is. So, maybe we could do that. Is that fair? So, on the 15th, we'll flash a message up, however that works. Okay? All right, we have done building permits. We're moving on to 17, which is approval to pay the following invoices from the General Operating Fund. Dutchman Contracting for DTI, the airport road, $9,309.25. Dutchman Contracting for DTI, Bush Hog Roads, $3,783.50. Dutchman Contracting for DTI for crushed gravel, $3,450. Fireworks FX for fireworks, $7,500. Island Home Hardware, July Statement, $2,698.52. Island Truck Repair for the transfer station, $2,698.90. JIL Engineering and Construction Playground Equipment, $35,677.90. Silk Stevens for the Northhead Material Testing, $12,719.60. And Sullivan Sales and Service for the transfer station garbage truck, $7,292.86.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to pay these invoices out of the General Operating Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Councilor Turner, question?
The Island Truck Repair for the Transfer Station, was that a truck, forklift, or something, or was that?
I don't have her files.
No, I don't know what it was either, without...
No, just where the other one, it listed it as being the garbage truck. I was just curious if it was...
Would that have been maybe the Packer truck?
No, the Packer truck was the Sullivan Sales one.
Okay. Do you want to proceed with paying that and have the treasurer email the specifics out, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't hold up payment of the invoice. I'm just trying to keep track of things a little bit.
Yeah. Well, we can, when the treasurer's back in, get her to email out the details of what that invoice is, if that's okay. I will say, I think the fireworks are here. We just didn't use them, because obviously the burn conditions what they are, but they're fireworks. And I do have a question, what's the playground equipment for $35,000?
That was the new equipment that was put in Victoria Park just last week.
And what did we put in? I haven't been to Victoria Park, I'm very excited.
Three new pieces and two are accessible.
Oh, cool. Anyone else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 17-2 is a General Capital Fund, Griffin &amp; Sons Construction Airport Hangar, $41,400. Silk Stevens for the airport hangar, $4,327.45. And Lindsay Construction Progress Number 10, $74,267.91.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass as read.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Councilor Green Law, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-1 is a motion to transfer $108,815.36 from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund. You heard the motion from Councilor Green Law. Do we have a second, or? Heard the motion, all, question? I lost my train of thought there for a minute. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-2 is a motion to transfer $13,752.48 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the General Operating Fund. You heard the motion from Councilor Turner. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19 is closed session. We have four items. The first one is financial for the snowplow. 19-2 is property dangerous or unsightly premises. 19-3 is legal dog issue. And 19-4, financial transfer station trailer.
Make a motion to go into closed session?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Councilor Toll, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this regular council meeting, the Village of Graham and Inn, to order. We were in closed session to talk about four things, the first of which was financial snowplow.
Yes, I moved that we authorize the CAO to purchase a plow from Jardine's Auction, with the, and to go up to $40,000 plus HST for that, from the Cap, General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Councilor Green. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-2 was property dangerous or unsightly premises?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the, first, does our bylaw enforcement for concerning buildings and such, to follow his recommendations and to enforcement of the order.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Councilor Green Law, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-3 was an update on legal on a dog issue, and there's no motion coming out of that. 19-4 was financial for the transfer station trailer.
I would like to make a motion to proceed with purchase of the new trailer for the transfer station.
You heard the motion from Councilor Toll. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Councilor Turner, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting will be here on September the 8th, 2025, at 7:30 PM.
And I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.